Evening, everyone, and thank. There was. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining our BCSC School Board Candidate Forum. This forum is being co-hosted and moderated by the Columbus Educators Association and the Bartholomew County Retired Teachers Association. My name is Alan Burkmire. I'm a middle school teacher, association representative, and will be monitoring on behalf of CEA.
Hello, everyone. My name is Janice Montgomery, and I'm moderating on behalf of BARTA Retired Teachers. We are grateful to all the candidates for participating tonight. And as a reminder, this is the first of two forums that we'll be hosting this week. Tonight, candidates from districts one and two are joining us. This Thursday, we will hear from candidates in districts four and six.
Before we begin, a few rules. We will start with opening statements from candidates. All candidates will be given one minute. After that, we will begin asking questions. While some questions will be asked of all candidates, others might only be asked to candidates of specific districts. All candidates will be given one minute each to answer the questions asked to them. If the candidates continue their remarks much longer than one minute, well, much less, sorry, long, much longer than the one-minute time limit. For the sake of time, we will mute them and move on.
Before we have opening statements, we wanted to remind all of our viewers that the deadline to register to vote is in no, for the November election is Tuesday, October 11th. If you want to register to vote, or if you want to check your registration status, you go to indianavoters.in.gov backslash.
So without further ado, let's hear opening statements from our candidates. Again, each candidate has one minute. We will begin with candidates from district one. Mr. Major, if you would please start us off.
Yeah, hi, welcome, everybody. Good evening. My name is Jason Major. Just a little background on me. I'm a plant quality leader at Cummins. I've worked at Cummins for about 11 years. We've lived in Columbus for roughly 22 years. We moved here in June of 2000. I'm seeking this board position to try and find a way to engage better with the parents and caregivers for the children that are in our community. To try and find ways to get them more engaged, more involved, and to help the students become good citizens long term. I have a little bit of experience from a board perspective. I have been the board chairman or vice chairman for Children, Inc. Learning Center for the last four years. And we are one of the very few learning centers that was open entirely through COVID. And so we've had to do a lot of work from a safety perspective to keep that place open, and we are currently at record attendance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Major. Next, we will hear from Mr. Vincent.
Hi, I'm Dave Vincent. I am married to my wife Lisa. We were married in 1973. And next year will be a very big year for us. I graduated from the Purdue Pharmacy School in 1975 and 78. We moved to Columbus. I was a pharmacist for 10 years, and then in 1984, I started my own business as a state pharmacy agent. I retired from State Farm in 2013. My wife is a retired English teacher. I have five kids. One of those is a current teacher in BCSC. I have 12 grandkids. 10 of those are in BCSC District. If elected, I promise to concentrate on academics in a safe environment. I promise to elevate teachers' income and their stature. I promise to be transparent and always listen to parents. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent. Last, Ms. Hurtado.
Hi, my name is Anna Carina. I'm a mom of two young children, one of which is in the public school system. I have prior experience as an educator, working with children from all backgrounds, abilities, and ages. Through my own experiences as an educator, as well as a parent, I have come to understand the importance of representation and ensuring every child is valued in their classroom. During the seven years I have lived in Columbus, I have worked on multiple youth organizations, learning and understanding the needs of our community, advocating for our children, and encouraging them to have a voice along with the resources available to succeed. I believe in the importance of supporting our teachers in every way and encouraging families to be involved in their children's education. And last of all, I believe that we, as a community, need to work together in fostering the best classrooms in which every child can succeed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hurtado. Thank you to our District One candidates for your opening statements. And now we'll hear from the candidates in District Two. First, we'll hear from Mr. West.
Thank you. I'm having some internet issues, so for some reason I cut out. I apologize. First and foremost, I'd like to thank both associations for hosting this, and I'd also like to thank all the community members for attending. I know that there'll be a lot of questions tonight, but there will also be some questions that are not answered that for members that weren't able to submit. If you have additional questions, please email me at votewestbcsc@gmail.com, or find me on my Facebook page, Roy West for BCSC School Board, District Two. I have three children in the school system, and I'm just a concerned father. And my main goal is to improve communication between the board, teachers, students, and parents, and also staff members. All this came about basically from not being able to communicate with the current board, and I look to solve that problem if elected. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. West. And now, Mr. Stinner.
Thanks, Janice. Like Mr. West, I'd like to thank both organizations for sponsoring this evening's forum. My name is Rich Stinner. On the ballot, I'll be Richard Stinner. I grew up in Indiana. I'm a product of the Indianapolis Public Schools. I grew up in a family that valued education. In Columbus, moved here about 1989. In Columbus, I've worked for the Chamber of Commerce. I currently work for Columbus Regional Hospital and have been involved in education and healthcare, local units of government ever since I moved here. I believe, as I said strongly, in the value of education. I've got two boys. One has graduated BCSC and is at Ball State. The other is currently at North. And I think the work of the board is important to a free and public education.
Thank you, candidates, for your opening statements. Let's jump into our first question. Several candidates for school board have spoken publicly about the need to reform the public comment section of the BCSC School Board Agenda. Currently, comments are limited to three minutes at most and must pertain to an item on the school board agenda. Critics of the public comments policies say they prevent community members from expressing concerns to school board members, though current school board members have emphasized that anybody can email any board member at any time. Candidates, what change, if any, would you like to see made to the public comment section of the BCSC School Board meeting agendas? We will begin this time with candidates from District Two. Mr. West, you are up first.
So the main change that I would make, I actually requested at the school board meeting last night, which would be for them to gavel out of the meeting so that the, they could talk back and forth and have communication and then gavel back into the meeting. Additionally, I'd like to, for the time limit, to only be three minutes if there's a certain number of people, say 10 or more. When there's only a couple people, I don't feel that they should be limited. And again, additionally, not limited to agenda topics. A lot of times, there's issues that could, that need to be spoken about that aren't on the agenda. For instance, there was a safety issue at one of the schools with a bus drop-off earlier this year, and we were unable to talk about it because it wasn't on the agenda. I've emailed before and not got responses, so I found it best to attend the meetings to be heard. So not being able to have a conversation, I think, really hinders it. So those are the main changes I would make. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. West. Mr. Stinner, your thoughts?
You bet. Thanks. I was wondering, will there be a repetition of the question from time to time? Do I kind of go off of what I remember?
I can repeat it. No problem. The question is, what changes, if any, would you like to see made to the public comment section of the BCSC School Board meeting agendas?
Great, thank you. In terms of the board meetings, the board meetings are really business meetings. The corporation is a business. And there are certain actions that are required by the state to take place in public meetings. I think that the most important part of the comment section of the meeting is for people to comment on the business items that are on the agenda. In the past, the board has had additional forums for communication. There used to be school board meetings on Monday mornings that were not business meetings. Were not attended by all board members, but were open to any topic. There also used to be, before a board meeting started, there used to be time for back and forth between members of the board and members of the public. I think either of those forums are some third alternative that I haven't discovered yet might be good.
Thank you, Mr. Stinner. Next, we'll hear from the candidates in District One, beginning with Mr. Vincent. So, Mr. Vincent, you may go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. I agree. The public comments section at school board meetings is awkward. It's hard to know that you're being heard. It's hard to know that the board members are listening to you. Communication with the public is really, really important. I really think that I would make myself available an hour before school board meetings and also after school board meetings to listen one-on-one with what people have to say. I think that would be a better way for people to get their comments to the school board. In the meetings, there's no back and forth, and that does seem to limit the effectiveness of those comments. But, and I think email does have some uses. It's limited, but I think it can be a good tool. But I think the one-on-one communication with the school board member is the best route to go. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent. Ms. Hurtado.
I think the public comment portion of school board meetings is very important as it allows parents to voice their concerns and be engaged in our educational system. However, I do understand that school board meetings follow a structured agenda, and they're like Mr. Center said, they're more business. So I think there should be other channels of communications for the public to engage with board members and address their concerns in a timely manner. I love using technology, and I believe there are many ways in which we can use social media and other platforms to open up communication between the public and school board members. Things such as live forums, Q and As, online chats, or even like he mentioned, meetings other than the business board meetings are great options to open that line of communication and eliminate the need to cram so many concerns into one board meeting. I think family engagement is extremely important in their kids' education. And one of my goals as a board member would be to ensure that every parent is able to easily have their answer, their questions and concerns addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hurtado. And last but not least, Mr. Major.
Yeah, so for all those that tone playing along, please take, friend, and try and condense your topic down into one minute, which, which is what we're all trying to do today. Now, give yourself three times that to make a point or to address a topic during a school board meeting. It's very, very difficult. So one of the things I had done last year, it was like last October, November timeframe, reached out to Dr. Roberts because I saw this as being a gap. What I had proposed back then was putting together a parent committee that would allow parents to kind of pool their resources, come up with some concerns, solutions, and have a very focused discussion then with the board, rather than having 432 people come up and say the same thing. So my thoughts are no different than everybody else. I talked to Dr. Roberts about that again last year. But it would also help to, during those discussions, to have a little more transparency about the data and reports that are being used to make the decisions that are being made during the meeting.
Thank you, candidates. We're going to move on to our next question, and it has a similar theme to our first question. Multiple candidates have said their goal is to increase parental control in public schools. Precisely how differs from candidate to candidate, and that isn't the only thing that differs. Bartholomew County is quite diverse, and precisely what parents want to see from schools differs widely depending on whom you are speak, to whom you are speaking. In many cases, one parent wants the exact opposite of what another parent seeks in our schools. So candidates, how will you balance competing interests among parents and community members? We're going to start with Mrs. Hurtado.
So again, it goes down to communication, having open channels of communications where parents can voice their concerns, you know, and board members need to be more engaged with those parents. I'm actively engaged in the community, and I love hearing from so many different perspectives. I lead multiple language groups in which I see many people from our community wanting to learn other languages and from other countries wanting to learn languages from here. So I am aware of so many different perspectives and views. And I think just by having open discussions, we can come to, we can address everybody's voice, everybody's opinion, and make decisions, you know, appropriately that represents, you know, many people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hurtado. Mr. Major, I'll restate the question. How will you balance competing interests among parents and community members?
So the first thing I think that we have to do is we have to start by listening to what other people have to say. And in order to do that, they must be allowed to speak, and they must have a voice. I think that comes in different ways. I had mentioned the parent committee earlier and the ability to have some level of engagement with the board to talk about the concerns that we have as a parent or a community, and again, offer solutions. I think that's one way of doing it. Another way to do it is to find incentives to, beyond just their child learning, to have parents be more engaged in school. Join a PTO. Be part of a school field trip. Engage with the teacher and help in the classroom or help in the, in the library, right? There's many ways that a parent can be involved. By getting more involved, they have more avenues to have that discussion and talk to the teachers, talk to the administration. And then the last piece is to Mr. Vincent's point earlier. Have the ability to speak before and after a board meeting or at other times throughout the week to be able to hear what people have to say, and then you have to weigh everything out.
Thank you, Mr. Major. Mr. Vincent, are you ready to roll on that question? Would you like it repeated? Would you like it repeated?
No, you might confuse me.
Okay.
I'd take a little bit different turn to start. I think the community has the responsibility to know what school board candidates, what they are all about, and what they advocate for, and then the community can elect the candidate that they think suits their needs. That sounds real simple. I think after that, the communication is really key between the school board and parents and the community. The parents and the community have, have a responsibility to give that communication. The school board member has the responsibility to be accessible. I think there's a couple of programs that schools could do. One would be family nights at schools would provide an awesome opportunity for families and parents to interact with teachers, and school board members would need to be present. And I think that would enhance the communication. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent. So now we'll move on to candidates in District Two. The same question, how will you balance competing interests among parents and community members? Mr. West, we'll start with you.
Yes, I do like the idea of having a parent committee and being able to have them have a voice in what's going on. Much like you said, however, you can have lots of parents with different opinions, right? So, so within that and balancing the actual opinions, I think as the school board, most people would agree at end of the day, we have to do what's best for the students. We have to keep students the focus of all of our decisions, right? And that we really want to focus on academics and learning for the students, and that would be a tiebreaker if there was any issues between parents. But I think having a communications background, I'm in a unique position to help maybe mediate those parents when they do have disagreements. Most of the time when people are disagreeing, they usually want the same common goal. They're just coming at it from a different point of view, and they may not have taken the time to look at it from the other person's point of view. And I think doing that is really important. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stinner, you get to wrap this one.
Sure. In terms of balancing competing points of view, I guess, when a school board is making a decision, it might be important to remember that a lot of what the school board is deciding is kind of already set by laws that are passed up in Indianapolis or out in DC. A school board does have to follow the law. And then in addition, there are lots of rules and regulations and guidelines. So sometimes when we have competing points of view, it's important to listen and to learn and to understand where people are coming from. Then ultimately, I think a lot of the decisions that we make are coming out of legislation at some level of government, and our job is to follow the law.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, candidates. We spent a little time talking about how the school board will interact with the community. Let's switch gears and talk about how the board will interact with the superintendent and the administration. The Indiana School Board Association urges all school board members in its Code of Ethics to act on matters of school governance only after considering the recommendations of the superintendent. Indeed, much of what the school board members do is interact with the superintendent. At some point, you will have a difference of opinion with Dr. Roberts. How will you resolve differences of opinion with the superintendent or other administrators with regards to governing? First, we'll hear from Mr. Stinner, and before you begin, Mr. Stinner, you are the only incumbent joining us tonight. If you could please share with us how you've resolved differences of opinion with the superintendents in the past.
Sure. I guess some of it comes down to my personal style. I'm one of seven board members. But a board needs to act as a cohesive unit. So there's communication with other board members. There's questions, discussion with the superintendent. Superintendents, actually selecting a superintendent is probably the most important job that a school board has. So when a board selects a superintendent, hopefully, they are looking for someone who has the skills and experience and expertise that they feel would be needed for the job, and then work with that superintendent. It's like what we try to teach at school, how to get along with other people, how to make common decisions, and how to move forward on a particular agenda.
Thank you for your thoughts, Mr. Stinner. Next, Mr. West, how will you resolve the differences of opinion with the superintendent with regards to governing?
Thank you. I think it's probably going to be about the same way that I would help resolve differences between parents. We're going to try to look at it from both points of view and take time to, to look at it from either his point of view or mine, or have, have him look at it from my point of view also, if we were to have a disagreement. And then once we had the disagreement, we talked about it and had open lines of communication with each other. At the end of the day, my vote would go again for what's best for the students regarding their education as the main focus.
Thank you, Mr. West. Next, Ms. Hurtado.
So again, it all comes down to communication and having those open discussions and understanding each other, listening to each other, and seeing where we're all coming from. And just when, we gotta just make sure that our decisions, regardless of whether we agree or not, are based on what is best for the children and all of the students.
Thank you, Ms. Hurtado. Mr. Major, your thoughts?
Yeah, so first of all, we don't all have to agree to end up being able to work together, right? There's always times where we may have a disagreement, and we may find that we just don't understand or like the decision or the way the decision's being made, but we still have to work together. I'll give you an example. Children, Inc., when we were going through our strategic planning with Indiana Youth Institute, there was about eight of us that were working together. Not all of us agreed to what we thought was going to be best, but during the strategic planning session, everybody has to stop, take a look at what is the problem you're trying to accomplish. You're trying to give the students a good or the best education that you can possibly give them. So as long as you stay focused on what the end goal is, you identify the problem well, you understand how to get everybody at the same level of understanding of what the problem is, then you can start to work through those differences and find a good solution for everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Major. Last, Mr. Vincent.
Yes, I guess I would refer back to my work history. I have worked for people, and I've had people work for me. We have always had disagreements, but when it comes to the end, sometimes you win and sometimes you lose. But we're all on the same team. Certainly, we have to listen a lot, and we have to talk some. And, but when we come to the table, we've got to all be on the same team. We've got to be behind each other. We've got to stay together and, and not let divisive divisiveness work into our group. Thanks.
Thank you, candidates. For our next two questions, we are going to ask you about the relationship between the school board and student learning. School board members are individuals that have come to the table with their own motivations, but ultimately, the community expects you to put your differences aside and do what's best for students. This is a heavy responsibility. So the question is, what is the role of the school board in providing a quality education for students? And we're going to start with Mr. Vincent.
For me, analyzing what's best for students and, and education would be all about following the data. We have plenty of data to analyze to see what programs are working in BCSC, to see what programs are not working. We have to spend a lot of time going over the data, knowing the programs that are in place, and then putting that all together to be the best thing for our students. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent. Ms. Hurtado.
I think school board members are responsible for representing all of their children when making decisions. We have to ensure that every child has a voice. Every child is valued in the classroom. And we have to ensure that every child has the opportunity to succeed in the classroom. So we have to, you know, be sure that we are putting them first in every decision that we make. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Major, would you like the question repeated?
Please.
What is the role of the school board in providing a quality education for the students?
Yeah, so the, I look at the role of the school board as to be, first and foremost, trusted steward of the finances that has been entrusted to the board. In that, that means that we have to ensure that we have a good group of educators that are retained throughout the year. So we need to attract and retain the best teachers. The best teachers will then do the best job to teach those students in the best way. We need to work to understand the curriculum and help them go through the approval process of ensuring that the curriculum is going to be a solid curriculum for all those students. We have to assist and approve with any strategies to, again, run the school in the best possible way. And when I say the run the school, that's a very broad meaning to that, right? There's a lot that goes into that, but ultimately, what it leads to is ensuring that we go from the middle of the pack with a lot of B, B-level schools to trying to get five or six A schools instead of the three that we have today.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Mr. West.
Thank you. Well, of course, obviously, the financial part and the business part, I think, has already been spoke about. But beyond that, I think what's super important for the board members to do, and I'm not sure if it is or isn't getting done currently, is to be in the schools, to visit the schools, to see what's going on, to talk to the people there on, you know, on the ground floor, see, you know, see what kind of issues they're having, communicate with them, and try to help make sure that the school board's doing what they can to assist the actual people working, the teachers, the staff. You know, you know, check out the bus route, see what the buses are doing, how that, you know, see if there's any issue. Don't just limit it to the classroom. Like, the school board can be there to help and talk to all the members of the community and all the teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stinner.
The, I think the role of the board is like the role of the board in any organization. The I think the role of the board is like the role of the board in any organization or corporation. It's up to the board to set a vision for the future, to identify and from time to time refine and restate what your mission is in this organization. And then to set objectives, you know, where do we want to be in the future and how are we going to get there? Those are the important things for a board to be doing. And in doing that, the board should be working with all of the stakeholders in the organization. So parents and families, students, teachers, all our staff members, all the taxpayers, and then many of the businesses in the community need to be involved in that work. I don't think the role of the board is down in the weeds, so to say, but at more properly focused at a higher level.
Thank you, candidates. Next, we want to get a little more specific on student learning. Over the last two years, many students did not grow academically as quickly as students in the past as the COVID-19 pandemic, virtual learning, and economic issues took their toll. According to data collected by the CDC, existing inequalities in education were exacerbated during the pandemic, resulting in a widening achievement gaps between students of color and white students, LGBT plus students and cisgender slash heterosexual students, student learning, student learning, English and native English speakers and more. Our question is this, what do you think BCSC should do to minimize the performance gap that grew between the different populations of students during the pandemic? First, we'll hear from Mr. West.
I think the basic thing that you're going to have to do when when you have any type of gap like that, whether it be from the pandemic or anything, is you're just going to have to get back to basics and get back to learning and systematically do it. I don't know that all all the different groups that you mentioned, if there's differences there or not, but I do know that if you're instructing in the classroom, I think for a teacher, it'd be hard to, you know, segment that way. I think they're going to have to teach all the students there in a systematic way and just kind of get back to basics and not necessarily worry about all the other stuff outside of that. I think if we have a focus on education and academics, then that would be the best way to move forward.
Thank you, Mr. West. Mr. Stinner.
Oh, thanks for the question. It's an important one and one that we've been thinking a lot about as a community. Student learning, I think, means meeting each student as an individual where they are and then trying to move forward with them, trying to further their education and help them reach their potential by removing barriers. What's happened over the last couple of years is unfortunate, but I don't think it really needs to change our strategy overall. We need to work, teachers and staff members, people in the corporation, need to work with each individual student, kind of as a a school one by one from student to student. And if there are strategies overall that will help minimize gaps in achievement between different groups, I think we should try to follow those strategies. But look for where we can evidence-based strategies that have been proven that they're going to work.
Thank you, Mr. Stinner. Next, let's hear from Mr. Major.
Yeah, so I have, in my research, found that our math and reading proficiency levels are around 50%. And that's 50% for the corporation. So personally, I think it's a little bit difficult to categorize some of the kids and say this kid is or this kid isn't. I see all the kids unfortunately needed to improve. All right, 50%, 52% reading proficiency and a 49% math proficiency is not very high. So I think what really hurt us during the pandemic was accessibility to Wi-Fi. Several kids did not have access to Wi-Fi. That made it very difficult to learn because they can't see or hear the teacher. When we speak about non-native speakers, one of the concerns you have there is if you can't talk to somebody in a language, regardless which language it is, you're not going to learn it. And so I think it really comes down to, in the case we had, was more Wi-Fi and more engagement one-on-one.
Thank you, Mr. Major. Mr. Vincent, your thoughts?
Yeah, thanks. Again, I'll refer to the data. We need to understand the data pre-COVID. And then I think it's a shared accountability situation. Teachers are accountable to teach towards state standards. Students are accountable for their behavior and to do their schoolwork. And the parents are accountable to be involved and to be supportive. If we're going to catch up, we can't do two years learning in one year, in one school year. We're going to have to have smaller classes. We're going to have to have more teachers, more T days, and we're going to have to have more counselors in every school building. Catching up and and coming from behind requires some extra effort and some extra resources, and that's kind of what I'm looking at. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent. Last, Ms. Hurtado.
Um, so I think the first thing we need to address are mental health needs. I think there need to be more resources available for students and teachers as well. And then as for educational needs, in order to to deal with our the educational needs that, you know, the kids have fallen behind on, we need to support our teachers and ensure that our teachers are well-supported with more hands-on assistance in the classroom so that they can better address the individual needs of each child and, you know, and help them get back on track.
Janice, you're muted.
I see that. Am I am I on now? Sorry. Thank you to all the candidates for your thoughts. And now we're going to switch to school funding. And specifically, I'd like to ask you about our BCSC's most recent local referendum. The referendum was passed in 2020 and was specifically directed to organizing, excuse me, for increasing educator pay and school safety. Eventually, it will need to be reauthorized by both the school board and the community. And if you are on the school board at that time, you would be voting on whether or not to put the referendum before the community once more for its renewal. So the question is, would you support a referendum for educator pay and the needs of the district? We're going to start with Mr. Major at this time.
I think we've all talked a little bit about how we need to support our teachers. We need to support them not only financially, but with support in the classroom. Last night at the school board meeting, there was a lot of discussion around bonds and funding. And I think that you have to pay the teachers. The money has to come from somewhere. If it can't be found in the current budget by making cuts, then you have to seek additional funding. So the referendum is the only way. I think the biggest concern that I have in the discussion that we had last night, one of the questions that I had brought up to Mr. Phillips was, how much money do we have out there that we still have to spend on school improvements? Right? So it sounds like there's tens of millions of dollars that need to be made there. So it's not just teachers that and teacher pay and how to pay them with the referendum. It's also how are we going to fund all the schools in the future for all the improvements that are going to need to be made to the aging infrastructure that we have?
Thank you, Mr. Major. Mr. Vincent.
Yeah, in short, I would definitely support a referendum if we needed that to increase teacher pay. I think we've all heard about the teacher shortage that's coming. And for us to get the best teachers and to retain the best teachers, we may need to look for more money from a referendum. I, I, our budget is a big one, easy for me to say, but I think there's money that can be found there for teachers. But we can go to a referendum if need be. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent. Ms. Hurtado, your thoughts?
So yes, I think that educators are some of the most important people in our school system because they're the ones who are teaching, you know, our kids and all the students to be a part of our community. Um, so yeah, I think it's worth investing in our teachers and worth investing in the resources for them to be available to provide a classroom that fosters that curiosity in children and that growth and development in them. So I'm all for ensuring that our teachers have everything that they need. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stinner, would you like to comment?
Thanks, yes. This may be one of the easiest questions. I think when you boil it down, Janice, which what your question was, would I, as a board member, support putting a question out to the voters about how to fund the schools? And I think this is an easy question to answer because the answer should always be yes, that we need the voters to help in the decision-making process. So I, I think I remember both referendum initiatives that have gone to the voters where the voters have said no in BCSC, and then there've been a couple of referendum options that have gone to the voters and the voters have said yes. So making the decision to put the question in front of the voters is an easy question for me.
Thank you, Mr. Stinner. And last, Mr. Mr. West?
Yeah, so I too agree that putting the question before voters is would be a good idea. Before doing so, I would try to exhaust other options in the budget, whether that be through grants, whether that would be through potential fundraising through. And I would also want to look at other local districts or maybe even other states that have similar laws and see how maybe they're doing it also. But certainly, teacher pay is very important. They're underpaid currently as it is. And so I would support putting that question before the voters, letting voters decide.
Thank you, Mr. West, and thank you to all the candidates. We have two questions left this evening, and then we will hear closing statements from all the candidates. The school board is at least somewhat limited in what it can do by the state legislature. For example, though, most school board members across the state agree that the school staff need to be paid more. Nearly all cite a lack of funding from the state as a reason they cannot increase educator pay to an appropriate level. Educator pay isn't the only issue that has created friction between school boards and the state legislature. Legislating targeting legislation targeting local control of school calendars, curriculum, and professional development have all appeared in the last couple of years. As a result, many school board members have taken to engaging directly with the state lawmakers, using their positions as local elected officials to tell lawmakers when they need to do more and when they need to back off. As school board members, how will you advocate for public education? Let's hear first from Mr. West.
So I think that I would work on having good relationships with those members. And then what I would do, again, the main thing I would focus on is getting funding for the schools, for teachers, and try to do so in a way that doesn't raise taxes. I know I've talked to a couple of representatives already and just talked to them about some grants, possibilities for funding for teacher pays that are available that we aren't currently using. And I would look into more of those with other members also. So again, the main thing would be to increase funding. And again, if there was any issues, if we had to talk about them to back off or so to say, then I wouldn't have any issues doing that either. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. West. Next, Mr. Stinner.
Thank you. Yeah. Since I've been in town in Columbus, the Third House Forums that happen on Monday mornings during a legislative session have always been entertaining and a great opportunity to meet face-to-face with legislators. It was the Third House Forums, the Schoolhouse Forums for communication with stakeholders were modeled after. So I think being present at Third House Forums, letting our state senator and our state representative know in person what we think. Sometimes it's more appropriate rather than saying what you think to take advantage of the opportunity to ask the legislators what their current thinking is. And then I've also had great luck communicating with representatives and senators by email. So talking with one of their staffers over the phone, emailing them my feelings on a topic has always been productive, and I try to continue that.
Thank you, Mr. Stinner. Mr. Vincent, what are your thoughts? You mind asking me the question again? Yeah, no problem. As a school board member, how will you advocate for public education?
Yeah, thanks. Well, it's all about relationships. It's all about getting to know our legislators, understanding their problems and understanding how their programs work. And and I think we need to also educate them. I don't think there's an issue with everyone understanding how important education is. Public education is the backbone of our society. And I just continue to believe that we can come together on the money that's needed in education. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent. Ms. Hurtado, how would you advocate for public education?
I want to ensure that I am well aware of the issues and the needs within our education and attend forums, like Mr. Stinner said, be be there in person and show up for our school, show up for our education, our teachers and our students. Attend forums, meet with legislators and just all and all advocate to be able to resolve the needs that we have in our education. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hurtado. Lastly, Mr. Major.
Yeah, I would not do it alone. I would tell you that to me, the best way to convince somebody how to do something is to first you understand what it is you need. So through discussions with the board and other stakeholders, such as administration, teachers, parents, students, whoever it may be, depending on the problem that we have, that we're trying to resolve with with someone from the state legislature, I would hope that we would really understand that problem so that we could then sell that problem to them and in in hopes that they will give us the solution that we request. But you can't do that alone. It really takes this team of people to be able to do that. I would definitely, first and foremost, you individually don't have the authority to do that on your own. You can certainly go talk to the legislator. I know that you can walk up to anybody at the fair and there'll be more willing to talk to you, probably talk to you longer than you want to talk to them. But you got to do it as a team. That's all there is to it. You got to do it as a team.
Thank you, Mr. Major. We are now to our final question of the evening, and then we'll hear closing comments from each candidate. We wanted our final question to be one on a to end up on a positive note. So candidates, we will ask you to share something that you believe BCSC is doing well and in general, the things you appreciate about our public school system here in Bartholomew County. Ms. Hurtado, would you start us with that discussion?
Yes, from my experience, I think the schools here are very inclusive and very open to all all children. There's a lot of beneficial programs in BCSC. I currently volunteer with Book Buddies, which is a way for parents in the community to help children improve their reading abilities and to help address one of the many needs within our school system. I've worked closely with family school partners, which helps. It provides resources for Hispanic families, ensuring that their children are able to adapt well in our community and their schools. And the Legada program is great in giving children the opportunity to grow up being bilingual. Studies show the great benefits of learning different languages, whatever language that is. And I'm just really had to have this program along with so many other great programs in our community available for for all kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Major, would you lead on?
Personally, I think that the C4 program is one of the best programs in the state. I would tell you that my daughter is in the nursing portion of that. And one of the really nice things about it is it gives you the opportunity to do a test drive of a career prior to investing in college. College isn't for everybody. So being able to at least go into something and take a look and do that test drive in school, being that it's a program that's offered here and you've got many being that it's a program that's offered here and you've got many different options that you can take advantage of, from everything from automotive care to the restaurant that was at North to, again, the nursing program, dental program, construction program. There's just so many different things that C4 offers that I think is exceptional and certainly not something that's easily replicated throughout the state and probably the Midwest. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vincent.
Well, one of the, the programs that BCSE has that I've had so much fun at through the past 20 or 30 years is all of our sports programs. The elementary basketball is awesome, and, and we just had a great time at the sports programs. And they're so good for kids to build competitive spirits and build team spirit. A, a couple of other new programs I've heard about is the accelerate accelerated learning TAs in elementary schools. I understand that program is working really well. Book Buddies has already been mentioned. That's a neat program. And you should have called on me before Majors because I wanted to talk about C4. I got to visit with Dr. Hack for about 45 minutes. And I think the neat thing about C4 is it just prepares our students for success. And that's what BCSE has to do, is that we got to prepare our students for real world. And we got to have high-level graduates. C4, just a great program. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent. Mr. West, your thoughts?
So I would also agree with David and Jason that C4 is a great program, preparing our students for the future. And then it also additionally gets them, you know, ready for a job that maybe, you know, it shows there's more than just college out there. Another program that we have that gets our students ready for the future is project-based learning. So all three of my students are currently at CSA Lincoln, Lincoln, which they do use that project-based learning there. And I know it helps them get ready for the real world. They're already doing job interviews in grade school and getting ready for that. So I think that that type of learning is really great in getting them prepared.
Thank you, Mr. West. Mr. Stinner.
I, I think the variety of answers that are, good answers that have come so far is an indication that BCSE is a corporation that has a track record of offering choices to parents and students. And I think that's really important. Sometimes in meetings, we call it pathways, whether your pathway is more traditional or project-based learning, you know, multi-language Legato at Clifton, the STEM programs and the participation rates that we're able to get with both STEM and C4, where such a wide variety of students are exposed to technologies and career choices. The iGrad program, I've just been amazed at the results that the volunteers and the staff people working with particular students through the iGrad program have been able to get. And then last, I want to give a shout out to the nurses. There aren't many corporations in the state of Indiana that still have a nurse in every building. And the fact that we've been able to afford that and support that has really made a difference. So those are some of the programs I'm proud of.
Thank you, candidates. And before we wrap for the evening, we will give each candidate time for a final closing statement. And I would like to thank all the candidates for keeping their, their statements tonight within the time limit or even ending early. So thank you guys very much. You've all done an excellent job on that. But we do have time for one more closing statement. And we'll begin with Mr. Stinner.
Thanks. Again, thanks to the hosts and to everybody, all the candidates that are participating tonight. I think it's going to be a great fall in Columbus. I, I do believe I have the, the skills, the experience and the expertise to continue to contribute to BCSE, to move it forward, to meeting its mission. I, I'm absolutely committed to a free and public education. I believe that that, that is one of the things that really helps set the United States apart. The fact that every student is entitled to a public education. And so many, many students are taking advantage of it. My degrees in economics and MBA in finance, I believe, give me a particular skill set for the board. And I've tried to use them to help keep BCSE in the black and keep its priorities in line, keep its spending in line with its priorities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stinner. Next up, Mr. Mr. West, excuse me.
Again, just thanks to everybody for tonight and that participated and hosted. It was, it's been a great event. I've talked a lot about communication and how I'm going to improve communication. I don't want you to take my word for it. I want you to put me to the test. For anyone that has unanswered questions tonight, please email me at votewestbcse@gmail.com or go to my Facebook page and ask me those questions. I will respond to those questions, each and everyone, no matter how long it takes. I hope I get flooded and I hope I get all kinds of questions so that I can answer those. Again, I, I have a communication background and I want to focus that in the board. I really want that to be my focal point. The other thing going was in, is on November 8th, which is a Tuesday, whether you root for East or you root for North, please remember Vote West.
Thank you, Mr. West. Ms. Hurtado.
Thank you, guys, for hosting this and for all the candidates being here. So with Columbus being such a diverse community, it's imperative that the school board represents children of all backgrounds. Being Latina and raising my children in a multicultural family, I'm confident in my ability to represent all children, including those that are often underrepresented. I strongly believe in supporting our teachers in every way because when our educators are well-supported, so are our children. And I strive to bridge the gap between caregivers and educators by creating more opportunities for open engagement. As I mentioned in my opening statement, I believe that we, as a community, need to work together and foster in the best classrooms in which every child can succeed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hurtado. Mr. Major.
Yeah, I want to thank you, everybody, for your attendance today, the 89 people on the phone and to the moderators that have been available and to the competitors as well. I think we've all got a lot of, a lot of notes here that we've all taken that have helped us get prepared for tonight. One of the things that has prepared me as well is my wife is a teacher at Fairlawn Preschool. So she taught at Southside long ago before we had a child. And she's been a teacher for a very long time. So I hear a lot about the needs and the concerns that teachers have. So I've done that. I've been a board chairman at Children, Inc., as I mentioned before. So there, I also am involved highly with the children. I've had a prior job in Cummins as a black belt, so it's a proven problem solver. I'm a quality leader now because we want to make sure that we build the best. And I want to ensure that we focus on safety. I know at least six kids that have talked about or attempted suicide during this time, and I want to make sure that we offer them safety. And I'll be the first one to say that I won't take a dime of the $2,000 that's offered. I will donate that back to charity and I will do this job for free if you elect me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Major. Last, Mr. Vincent.
Again, thanks to everybody that's participated and listened tonight. I'd appreciate your vote. I do pledge that my focus will be on academics in a safe environment. I will concentrate on transparency. I will work to elevate teacher pay and stature. I pledge to listen to parents, teachers, and administrators, and then do what's best for students. Public schools need to be strong or our society will crumble. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent, and thank you to all of District One and Two candidates who have joined us here tonight. Before we leave, we want to remind everybody of some upcoming important dates. First of all, if you wish to vote in the upcoming election, the deadline to register is quickly approaching. To check if your registration is accurate or to register to vote, go to indiana voters.in.gov. Don't delay. The deadline is quickly approaching.
Additionally, we hope that you'll join us again on Thursday when we hear from candidates in District Four and Six. You can register for this Thursday evening's forum at bit.ly/BoardForum46. That again is bit.ly slash capital B-O-A-R-D capital F-O-R-U-M four six. Thank you again, everybody, for joining us. Thanks to the candidates. Thanks for everyone who put this together behind the scenes. And we hope you have a great rest of your evening. Have a good night.